All right, let's go ahead and get started on this June 5th Samamish Planning Commission Meeting. Let's call it order. First, we'll do a roll call. John Bachman.
Here.
Sidus Nkara.
Mike Bresko.
Here.
Sayed Safavian.
Here.
Husham Al-Kawad.
Here.
I am Mark Bachman, and I'm here. And Ajay Chakrapani said that he's running late, but does plan to be here. And we have our new student representative. Can you just say your name and introduce yourself in two sentences?
Yeah, I'm Neil Dela. Yeah, I'm Neil Dela. I'm a student at Skyline High School, and I'm very interested on contributing to Samamish's Planning Commission.
All right, welcome, Neil. Let's see, next is approval of the agenda. We're going to talk about ourselves tonight, so anybody have any changes to the agenda or comments on the agenda? Okay, we'll call the agenda approved. Next is approval of the minutes from our May 15th meeting. Anybody have any corrections to the May 15th meeting minutes that they noted? Nope, so we'll call the May 15th meeting minutes approved. Next is public comment. So, does anyone want to make a public comment this evening?
Sure.
Paul, go ahead.
Never too late.
And if you're watching online, or you're watching us in the future, we are having a potluck and eating at the same time, so if you happen to hear somebody chewing, we'll try to tell them to turn their microphone off.
Paul Stickney, Samamish. I'd just like to say off the bat, I'd like to lobby for a return. I understand the changes in the scope of your guys' charter that was recently passed, but I'd like to have us reconsider non-agenda and agenda comment, and maybe put agenda comment at like a three or four-minute timeframe. I'd just like to make that suggestion. I gave this public comment to the city council on Tuesday, and I'm not going to read the whole thing like I did there. I'm going to cover sort of towards the end of this. You can watch my comment on Tuesday night after the crowd of rightfully so concerned people with Inglewood. That was an interesting meeting. What I want to mention about this comment is, the city staff and the mayor accepted an award from Futurewise for the comp plan, and I agree with a lot of things, but there's one major thing missing. So I came up with the quote from 1969, happened to be about this same time of year, and I was in Toowalamee Meadows camping on the night that they landed on the moon. Had a front row seat, but of course I couldn't see anything because it was only the moon up in the sky. But, the quote of Neil Armstrong was, he said, "One small step for man and one giant leap for mankind." A quote I have for the Samamish Comp Plan is, "Several significant strides forward, but one profound step backwards for all Samamish kind." When you read my comments, you'll see the list of all the things that the city moved forward, and there were a lot of them over the last two comp plans, and again, listen to my comment to city council. But the stride backwards is not in facing internal housing needs that are far, far greater than any of our regional needs will ever be. We don't plan for that, we are silent on it, it's having a lot of negative consequence as opposed to positive consequence, and it's not too late to consider some form of adjustment to comp plan and to town center plan based on internal need, not based on regional need. So I have mentioned before wanting to add 5,000 market rate houses to the 2,000 affordable. And the only comment I want to make, and I'll go a tiny bit over my three, just a couple seconds, is if our community had a lot of market rate housing in the 500 to 14 range, and we were tasked with adding market rate housing that we didn't need to meet affordable, that would be wrong. That would take a community discussion to do that. But the exact opposite is true. The market rate housing of B and C types is five to 10 times greater than our affordable need. We can meet all of it, and it will all be genuine instead of manufactured. So we should really consider adding market rate units based on internal needs to our comp plan and to the town center plan. Appreciate the chance to extemporaneously ad lib here.
Thanks, Paul. Anybody else in the room? How about, we know online, anybody?
Yes, we have one hand raised online. Mary, I'm promoting you now.
This is Mary Victor. Sorry to miss the potluck tonight. It's always one of the funnest meetings because the food is so good, and just to be able to see people and talk a bit as you have in the meeting is awesome. I just wanted to say, since there's training going on from the Deputy Director of Community Development, the Planning Commission serves a very, very important role. There's many commissions in the city, but the Planning Commission's recommendations go to city council. So, some of the city council members actually watch the meetings, they like hearing the questions, the recommendation letters are very good, and I've seen and heard them used before at many meetings. So it's really important when you discuss things to have read the packet and thoughtfully put out remarks. Sometimes just a word, or a number, or a sentence, or striking something can make a really big difference. I remember in my first meetings when I started regularly attending in 2015, they were doing the tree ordinance as an emergency, and there was a lot of public input, and word changes, and matrices, and council people, and a lot of people from the public who advocated very strongly. And one of them was, they were not always using the word "shall," they were doing "should" or "maybe," or "guide," or whatever, and they finally decided that it needed to be "shall" because there needed to be that strength of word for there to be teeth in the ordinance. And as you know, the tree ordinance is pretty strong, still in effect, and so just from those meetings on that, and there were many of them, those discussions and choosing the word "shall" has made a big difference. The other thing is, is for public comment, a lot of times we research, we study, we try to teach or inform, because we try to make sure that the right information is being brought at the right time in front of you. And I do agree with Paul Stickney, what he said tonight, it is really hard to fit things in in three minutes and only get one topic, and only, it can be agenda or non-agenda, but a lot of times the Planning Commission, we need to cover things that are coming up, or things that happened, or provide information, so it isn't necessarily related to that meeting. And if we can only speak at the beginning, it's very, very hard, like we hear the whole meeting, but there's no way to give feedback to it unless we go to the next meeting, which there's a new topic on. So I would like to see the three minutes before and on agenda, and then the three minutes at the end, agenda reinstated. I know that you're trying to follow what city council does, but they also do that for study sessions. Study sessions, the questions go at the end, and that's usually the second Tuesday of the month, and they don't do legal things. So anyway, for all the times that you have listened or spoken up, go ahead and say, and you know, public comment, we heard this, it seems pretty important, or even if it's Mary, or Paul, or somebody else said this, you don't have to name us, but carrying forward with the ideas and getting into the code, sometimes it takes 10 or 15 years to update the code or to get things in. So thank you for listening tonight.
Thanks, Mary. Anybody else? Okay. Let's move on to our main business for this evening, which is discussion about the Planning Commission, training, orientation, reminders, and Matt, I'll hand it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Glad to welcome our city clerk, Krista. Krista's going to provide an overview of open meetings and public records. So please enjoy your meals, hopefully your microphones are off. You have two presentations. Krista's going to do the first one, and then I'm going to provide kind of a brief overview of just kind of an orientation. We're going to send out an orientation guide in the next couple of days, and this is really for Neil's benefit, being a new member, and kind of showing you through our website, and then kind of the duties and bylaws and other things. So, I'll turn it over to Krista.
Thank you. So I'm Krista Kilzmeier, the city clerk for the city of Samamish, and this is a general public disclosure training. I'm realizing, I've been told you don't really email that much, so some of this may be way too descriptive, but just a lot of hypotheticals or things to think about that could happen, so you're using your best practices when you're communicating via email, and then some open meetings information as well. And so maybe a few of you have emailed with or met the clerk's team, so I'm Krista. Tanessa is back there at the table, so she is the admin assistant. Amber is the deputy city clerk, and Sabrina Ottness is the public disclosure officer. So you may at times be getting communications from them relevant to public records or clerk's office issues. And so just a general overview about records management with the clerk's office. We track records from when they come in to when they meet their retention period to be disposed of, which can be destruction, or can be transfer of custody to the state archives. We just had the state archivist here to take some boxes, including some Big Rock Park records, so those go to the state archives according to the state retention schedule. The definition of a public record is up there. The main thing to remember is it's regardless of physical form or characteristics. So you may have a handwritten note in front of you, that's still a public record if it's about city business, or there's an audio file, voicemails, Zoom recordings, and then just your standard paper like this is also a public record. I'm going to just briefly describe the public records request process, because it will, again, include some of your emails and records. So what is a public records request? It's a request, according to that definition we gave you, prepared, owned, used, retained by a public agency. Now, mostly relevant to, I think, the Planning Commission, is a lot of times if a body makes a decision, a requister wants to know how that decision was made, and so they, since they don't do, we do have some regular requesters, Mr. Stickney and Ms. Victor are very good at making public records requests, because they are very targeted. But somebody who doesn't do this very often, they may be very overly broad, or they may not know exactly what they're looking for, so they might request, "I want to know how the Planning Commission made this decision." So according to state law, that would not be an identifiable record. So our office would go back with them and say, "What exactly are you looking for?" And then sometimes they might come back with, "I want all emails to or from a certain staff member," or "all emails to and from the Planning Commission," or they might request certain dates, but just so we're actually looking for a specific record. So maybe they'll say, "I want the minutes from this meeting where this decision was made," or "I want the transcript from this meeting," or "the YouTube video from this meeting." So then we're actually looking for an identifiable record. And this is all in the Washington Public Records Act, which we call the PRA abbreviation or for short. And then this is kind of the process from our office. We get a request, we have to respond within five business days, we search for the records, there may be redactions done, that would be through our attorney's office. We provide the records, which can be in installments. We do have a records request right now that is back to 2020, so it's taken us years to fulfill, so we can do batches, maybe 30-day installments. So the five-day response is not closing the request, it's just responding to the request, and then eventually we will close it. But many of our requests, we are able to close with it, most of them actually, we close within that five days. And again, explaining the five-business-day response, provide the record, link to the record, or provide an estimate, so we say, "This is going to take a while, 30 days, two weeks." Sometimes we have to get the record from our site, request clarification. Some of them get referred to King County. We get police, you know, there was a police incident, I want the record here, we refer them to King County. We just recently got a marriage license request, so that's also through King County. Caution for the Planning Commission is you may yourself get public records requests. Public records requests don't just go to staff, they don't just go to our public disclosure officer. If you have a person from the public who is looking for a record, that is a public records request. So I don't know if any of you ever get that. Maybe somebody emails you and says, "How did you come to this decision?" You can explain your thought process, but if they're actually looking for a record, maybe they want the comprehensive plan, maybe they want a climate action plan, that is a request for a record. There is the form on our website, there's also the PRR@samamish.us. The main issue here is that there was a recent ruling at a court level that cities need to actually close a request with saying it's closed, and saying the person has a year to respond and file suit. So there's a statute of limitations by which a person can say, "Hey, the PRA was violated, I have an issue." And there was a case where it was unclear when exactly their request closed. So we, as a clerk's office, provide that closure language, and that's why we handle public records requests rather than staff just sending the record out, because then that closure language isn't there. So there's a lot of legal issues that go into public records requests that hopefully you'll never have to deal with. Just want to provide an example of a public records request that also relates to public comment, and relates again to Mr. Stickney. Thank you, Mr. Stickney, you provided a good example today. So, we had a requister who was looking for a letter submitted to council, and it was read during the public comment. Now, this was actually then, it had been emailed, so we were able to get it via email. You can see it's given a request ID 6377, but the thing to remember is, if somebody read something at public comment, they have the letter in their hand, us saying, "Oh, it's on YouTube," or "There's a transcript," is not the same thing as the actual letter. So that's why staff gets a copy from the requister, you got a copy, somebody will have a copy, and that is a public record. And then, I don't know if you're doing any sort of handwritten note communications ever, but those handwritten notes are a public record if you're communicating about city business. And there have been instances, luckily not here, where planning commissioners, city council members, were texting during a meeting, so like maybe John is secretly communicating with somebody on the other side of the table, you know, Mr. Bachman, my apologies. But that would be, you know, the public has a right to see your communications. So handwritten notes, text messages, related to city business are public records, so that's a good thing to remember. And then very briefly, transitory records, so you don't have to keep everything forever. A transitory record is defined by the state that you only need to retain until no longer needed for agency business, they're of little value to your work, or no value to your work, no value to your agency. And there's a whole list here, which I won't go through from the state, but basically, if somebody calls you and says, "Call you back," or to call them back, you know, that's a transitory record. As soon as you return their call, you don't need that voicemail. If you write a note down, "Need to call so-and-so," as soon as you call them, it's gone. So a lot of, and redundant, so everybody got this, so we don't need to keep every single copy of this, it's a redundant record, the agendas and everything, those are all redundant. So a lot of things are redundant or transitory, that when you've done what you need to do, you're done with it. If you let Matt know you were going to be late for a meeting, that's a transitory record. So there's a lot of transitory records going around. Let's see. Also, requests for information, like I said, a lot of times you're going to get requests for how something happened, which is not a request for a record. If they want a policy, that's a request for a record. If they want to know how you decided to come up with that policy, that's a request for information. So I think there's been, you know, some issues with council lately where people are, they're wanting to know how a decision was made, but they're not looking, they're not asking for a specific record. So we're trying to work with these requesters to narrow down what they're actually looking for. Okay, then, all of this hopefully has overwhelmed you, and so I have your city email address with an asterisk for our youth board person. You do not have a city email address sadly, but we just want to really encourage people to use their city email address. I've created a hypothetical disgruntled Planning Commissioner here who thinks it's a lot of work and they're a volunteer, exclamation point. So, but luckily, like if you're, you've probably never gotten a communication about a public records request, and that's because we at the city clerk's office are doing the searches ourselves through city email addresses, and then if we do have our youth liaison getting email from a city email address, emailing to a city email address, those will all show up in the search. And, but, if you use your personal devices for city business, they are still public records, and sometimes requesters will specifically seek records from your personal devices. We have a form here, probably can't see that far, but it's a form that certifies that you searched like your WhatsApp, Facebook, et cetera, accounts for public records, and the yellow there is saying that you don't use your personal devices for city business, which is the easiest one, just check that off, you're done. One thing to caution though, is you can't control how people contact you. So maybe you've decided you're never going to use your personal devices for city business, but your next-door neighbor says, "Hey, at the Planning Commission tonight, can you be sure to vote yes for this project?" Uh-oh, now you've got a public record on your personal phone. So that's one thing to just remember, that you can't control how you are contacted. Now in that instance, you should tell the person, "Thank you for bringing this to my attention, but also please email my city address." And I have seen that from city council members who have explained that to people, which is very nice, that they just say, "Hey, don't use my city email address." Okay, and we also have the Sound of Music here, which is a classic. So, this is, another effort we have here is to off-board commissioners. And so you'll fill out a form when you have retired from the Planning Commission, certifying that you've turned over all of your public records on personal devices. This helps us so we don't have to track you down in perpetuity, like in 2080, we'll be looking to see if you had a record about the town center. Now, you've certified that you did this, and that, you know, releases the city, that you've shown that you did this, and you provided those records. Now, as I set up at the top there, you should plan ahead, so when you are departing, you're not having to look through four years' worth of your Gmail account, or Microsoft, my apologies, there's a lot of Microsoft people around here, you're not looking through your email account generically for records. And so then when you leave, oh, here they are, you're done. But that's something to just remember, you're going to have to do when you leave the Planning Commission, you're going to have to certify that you've done this search. And then we're getting to the very end here. I would like to clarify that I am not an attorney, and because I'm not an attorney, I have made my college professors ashamed, and just taken it directly from MRSC, I'm not going to read it aloud, but this is explaining serial meetings via email, which I was told was a concern or confusion among the Planning Commission. And so there's just two slides on this from MRSC on cities, counties, and special purpose districts. But it talks about, you can have a serial meeting which violates the Open Public Meetings Act. You don't have to literally be physically in the same room, you can be communicating by phone call, email, other electronic means, text messages, social media posts, comments, and then you've created a serial or rolling meeting that violates the OPMA. And so the public has a right to see how you make your decisions. If you're communicating via email, they can't see what you're doing, so you're violating the OPMA. And for our youth representative here, the Open Public Meetings Act has rules for how a body can meet if they have a quorum, which is a majority of the body, that you have to have a certain time period of how much notice before you have a meeting, and if you have a meeting in a place like, not at City Hall, it still has to be open to the public. So if everybody met at somebody's house, and they were discussing city business, that means that anybody can come in there and observe what you're doing. Tonight, we had this potluck, and you weren't discussing city business, so it was allowed to just mingle, but it was open, so anybody could come in and see what you were doing. So, and then there's one more slide here, same thing taken directly. This just describes one particular case about a head tax. There were in-person meetings, emails, phone calls, text messages, could constitute a meeting, and then, one way to do this is you can receive communications, like for Matt, if he sends you the Planning Commission packet, and you just get it, and you're done, that's fine, because that's what they're talking about, passively receiving information. But when you start going back and forth, reply all, everybody's getting jumped into here, and you're coming to some sort of decision, then you're having problems with the OPMA. And a good tip is to respond directly to the staff member, and not CC the whole Planning Commission. So feel free to communicate one-on-one with staff, and you don't have concerns about the OPMA. It's when we're having all of this back and forth with a bunch of different folks. And that is about it, and again, my apologies if you've sent one city email in your life, and I just went into this level of detail, so. If you have any questions, I am available here.
Anybody have questions? John?
Krista, could you expound a little bit on, you said use of personal devices, so I've got my personal laptop. The only city business I have on here is city email. So, because you have access to that record, I don't need to worry about trying to search for something in my city email.
Correct.
I don't have pictures, or notes, or documents, or anything else, just city email.
Yes, I think there have been instances in the past where people have maybe emailed, they have their city email, and maybe they want to print something at home, so they forward it to their personal account, and then they've created a new record, or they're, maybe they have confidential information they're forwarding from their city to email, and then it has to be reviewed twice. So, we send that to, we go through, and we maybe get it from your personal and your private, or your personal and your city, and we're duplicating things. So really, trying as much as possible to do everything in your city account, not forwarding it to your personal account. You're going to print it at home, still, you can still access your city account from home, print something from home, instead of forwarding things back and forth. There are times where maybe you have to move something from one account to the other, but just trying to keep things as concentrated as much as possible into your city account. And then you don't, you don't get iPads, or laptops, or phones, or anything, correct, as a Planning Commissioner?
Yes, I do.
Oh, you do? Okay, you have phones, though?
No, not phones.
Okay, but you have your own device. Okay.
However, I will point out that for many of us, what we had was not super useful, so we use our own personal device, but it's mostly email. Ajay, you had a question? Oh, yeah. Ajay, you had something? Go ahead.
Yeah, so I had one question. Can we go to slide 19?
Yes, I'll just have to bring it back again. Figure out which one it is. Oh, here we go. Yes.
This is slide 19, yeah, where it says that, in a way that eventually turns into a majority of the body collectively taking action. I'll give you a very specific case. I was coming from Seattle, I was stuck on the way, and I had texted before leaving to Commissioner Mark that I am going to be late, and I also texted David Pyle that I'm going to be late at that point in time. If they had forwarded it to the group to say, "Hey, it looks like Ajay is stuck, he's going to be late here," does that constitute, eventually turns into a majority of the body?
I think because that would be a transitory record, and you're not really taking action on it. Do you vote to excuse people at the meeting? I mean, I just don't think that would be a substantive decision whether or not, and he would relay that information to you. So it's a transitory record, it's not something that you're taking any sort of substantive action on, but it doesn't, that was something I had in my presentation initially, is, do consider whether you need to create another email, so if you can just verbally say you're late at the meeting, and rather than forwarding the email, but you've not created, it's just you're creating more records, but it's not an OPMA issue.
Okay.
Yeah.
Got it. Even if it's a text message, it's an OPMA?
Yeah, so that'd be a transitory text message.
Okay.
So, yeah, there are a lot of, running late to the meeting was one of the examples they provide. they provide. So that, that's a good example of a transitory record, you can delete that, you don't need to keep it forever, and we, we like those records.
Okay.
Big fan of them.
Got it, thank you.
Thank you.
Sayad, did you have something?
Yeah, a couple of questions. One is communication, Chris. Did I hear you saying that, let's say during the meeting and there's a presentation and I make a note to myself, or, how am I supposed to, do, am I supposed to take a picture or scan it and keep it? Because it's going to be a public record? Is that what I heard?
If you would decide whether you think it's, and it's according to the state law, of course, not just your personal opinion, but if it's a transitory record, maybe just temporary notes that you, you don't really need for beyond that meeting. But we have had handwritten notes turned over for a public records request. So I would generally caution your handwritten notes, because they, they have gone, we have had grant review committees that have handwritten notes. We've also had cases where people have done handwritten notes and they've crossed things out, and then they get very, very nervous, because they're like, it's going to look like I am hiding this, when I literally crossed it out. And so it's okay, well, just turn it over. But it can, it can, it can lead to some issues if your handwritten notes are even crossed out, because it will look like you potentially are covering up some evidence.
So your recommendation is not actually taking the notes at the meeting?
I would keep them, I would, I can help you figure out what the retention is for them, and then you would probably file them away somewhere. The odds of them being requested are very low, but they are still a public record. Yeah.
Now, let's talk about the communications. Some of us, I think that John and I think Mark too, we use in our own computer. Because initially, it was given to, to me, but I'm an Android person and the system was iPad, and we had difficulty as far as getting some of the documents. So I finally decided to give the, the city-owned laptop back and I'm using my own. So is that pose any question as far as communication?
I think as much as possible, we want you to use the city devices. And we understand that that's difficult. We have boards and commission members trying to get them to use their city account, use their city device. And so the recommendation from the clerk's office is please use your city device as much as possible. And again, I can follow up with you and communicate with the attorney about what we want to do about that. Because there's probably certain, I'm not a computer expert, but even metadata created by, I don't know if there's issues with using this computer versus that computer, if someone's a computer, computer genius in the room. There's just probably certain records you're creating on your personal device, even if you're using it for city business or your city email account, there's, there potentially are issues with creating records on your personal device.
I think that, I'm not the only one. John, you have the same, right? Who else has his own computer? Okay, so.
We did have a court ruling though recently that did say, we are not compelled to seize your personal device. So we can, we'll ask for the records from you repeatedly, 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 but the court said, we do not have to seize it from you. At this point, for now, so. Yes, for now.
You never know, I might want to give it.
I may seize your laptop.
Second question about the communication. I guess I have two options when I want to communicate, either with my fellow commissioner or with the city council, an item or a question. I either can use my own email and email the city council or the planning commission. I'm going to use email my own, the, the city email that I was given to me. Would it make that much of a difference that, can I use my?
I think it's important, something I was also going to add, is to differentiate between when you're acting as a commissioner versus when you're acting as a, a private resident of Sammamish. So if you need a record as a planning commissioner, that's different than if you need a record as a building permit for your house.
I was not talking about the, no.
Yeah, for email.
Simple communication.
Yeah, I think if you're, if you're communicating as a planning commissioner, you should use your city email account. If you're communicating as just a resident, you can use your private email account. It's kind of like how with the, the city council, they have to distinguish between when they're acting as a city council member and when they're campaigning now that the, it's election season, they differentiate between their campaign and their, their city email, they use two different emails, their campaign email versus their city email. So that's something with a planning commissioner, when are you yourself and when are you a planning commissioner? Just like if you come to a meeting and speak, are you speaking as a planning commissioner or are you speaking as yourself?
So if I'm sending an email to the city council as a citizen?
Yes.
Then that is not subject to the public record?
You can use your personal email, but it's still going to be a public record because it went to a city council member.
Oh, I see.
Yes, so it will still show up in a search, citycouncil@samamish.us, that your personal email went to that address. So it's being a public record based on who received the email, not on who sent it.
Thank you.
Yes.
Krista, I have a question.
Okay, I'm great. I'm glad people are still awake.
Great presentation, and then you answered all the questions. So thank you. So I, question about, for me, is the records disposable?
Yes.
If I print some comp plan or anything at home, is it okay to put it in the recycle bin, or do you want us to shred it or bring it back?
So if it's a duplicate, you, you can just get rid of it, because we have a copy ourselves. If you have records that you've created, that it's the only copy, we do have a destruction log that we fill out that certifies why we have authority to dispose of it. And you'd probably just turn those records over to us with that offboarding and then we would deal with it. We don't expect you to go through and apply the retention schedule, but just keep records that you think have value and then we'll go through and sort through them. Or you can ask us and we can, we can clarify. I mean, I had a staff member who asked me the retention schedule for a return receipt on mail, and that's actually in the schedule. The schedule's over 100 pages long. So all kinds of things are in that retention schedule.
Wow. What about the stuff like Paul and all, they give it to us during the commission?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I mean, so I've always, yeah, so you, you can take it, like, and like, so we have one for Lena, we'll have it and put it on, I think iCompass, correct? And then obviously, because it's a duplicate, you can just keep, like, the retention schedule tells you, sometimes it says when you have to get rid of stuff, but you can keep stuff. If it's duplicate, go ahead and keep it. It's just, we have to be sure we have one copy. If someone says, hey, I want this Paul Stickney 6525 letter and we don't have it, we've, we've failed the public. So we have it, Paul, we still have it here, so it's good.
Us disposing at home is okay?
Yes, yes. Please recycle, yeah, yes.
I, I have a follow-up question.
Okay.
So that one, let's take that thought a little further. We were last year working on a number of plans that we were reviewing, and the documentation and all of those things, that was going through reviews, commissioner reviews that were there. And we had comments written in, on a draft document.
At the Canvia?
Exactly.
I think, is Miriam here? We talked about that a little bit before, but Mr. Brandmeier maybe can clarify?
So what if I print that out, is the question, just like she said?
Well, we, we retain those records. But if you're printing out and then marking them up and, and writing something else on it, that could be considered a new record and would need to be retained.
I see, I see. So if, if I see something and so that's written something on that, and I mark on top of it as a follow-up comment or something like that, then that's public comment, I need to retain that per city.
Yes, as long as it's not transitory, so maybe, so the ones I've seen at staff are people having meetings with property owners or a grant review committee. But if you're writing a note, be sure to call back so-and-so, that's transitory. But if it's something that is helping you make a decision or something that you want to look back on later to remind you of something, that goes beyond transitory and it has retention value. Many things have a two-year retention value. It's generally two years, six years, but hopefully it would be a two-year retention.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I mean, I, I can tell you, I just use legal pads and, and I'm using them less and less now because everything here is on, you know, my laptop. But I will have a stack of legal pads in my office that I've written notes on for years. And then when I leave a position, that's just, I just hand that over. So that's helped quite a bit. It took me a while to kind of get there, it's all uniform, it's, and I know exactly where it is at all times.
So Krista, so far you've stayed kind of on the positive side. You might illuminate a little bit how harsh these penalties can be, or sometimes how deep the rabbit hole can go. I'm thinking Bainbridge Island is a good example.
Well, I don't have that dollar amount on the top of my head, but I mean, we, we'll, well, even, even when you succeed in a case, you'll spend hundreds of thousands of dollars in legal costs. So I do think the state or the courts generally, at least in our case, have been compassionate in terms of if you can just document, so for example, here, we can document that we did meet with you, we did tell you this, we did ask for this, just showing that, that we've, we've done our best and we worked, the term was again, good faith. So I think people need to understand that if you, if you're sincerely trying, these are, these are very difficult at times to understand all these different regulations. And if, if you don't, if you're not intentionally doing, you're trying your best, the, the courts will show some compassion, I hope. So. Yeah, okay. I'm not an attorney again.
Now, if I remember my history right, the courts will also come down on you pretty hard if you're intentionally.
Yeah.
Yes, it's, it's the intentional, if, or if they can even just show it's intentional, but, you know, I, oh, I accidentally recycled that one piece of paper. I mean, we're, we're trying our best, but there, or some handwritten note disappeared into the air. I mean, we're, but we're trying our absolute best to comply with the PRA.
If I remember correctly, some of those council members had their personal hardware, or hard drive subpoenaed, but it was intentional.
One more question, what has been the most challenging public record request that you know of that you've been involved?
The most challenging? I think it's just, just ones that, no, I just, I think just ones that people don't fully understand how broad they are. Because I used to work in Alaska, and Alaska, you can charge for five hour, you know, if it's going to take more than five hours, you can charge. And in Washington, it's unlimited, so just, and, and they don't have to narrow their requests. So just going through and searching through tens of thousands of emails is, but I don't know, I can't think of one off the top of my head that is particularly difficult. But even sometimes finding a file, you know, going through all kinds of different files and finding one, but it's just, it's just mostly the, the time, the monotonous time factor, but it's not particularly difficult. So I do want to assure the public that we are not going on detective searches, that it's more, we know where things are, it just takes time to go through them. It's, we're not unsure where records are, we're just going through them, so.
So you mentioned one that it's been, you have to go back to the 2020 and it takes a lot of time.
Yes.
So the cost associated with that city has to eat it up?
Yes, so, so that, it's just, the, the cost is the cost, yes. Now, we can charge for, if people want paper copy, we have, we do have a fee schedule for public records requests. So if somebody, we can email it to them, but if they wanted to print out, then we can charge for the paper. And we, we can incur more fees. I have not generally been a fan of fees, it just doesn't seem like a, something worth doing, even though it is time-consuming. But I will defer to the higher-up direction.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Maybe I'll just add an editorial comment from my years of being on the planning commission. Some of this sounds like a thing, but if you communicate through your email, don't push reply all. There's a guy at work, every time somebody hits reply all, he puts a little meme that says, every time you push reply all, a kitten dies, and there's a picture of a kitten there. And I always remember that because it's, yeah, don't reply all, stay in your city email. And as long as you're not generating something new, so if you're downloading something or printing something or looking at something that's just a, a plan or something like that, a map, that's already a record within the city, if you kind of stay within those boundaries as a planning commissioner, you're probably fine. If you're a city council member, different story. But if you're a planning commissioner, the work that we do very rarely gets outside of those boundaries. So that's been my experience, anyway.
Let me understand what you just said, Mark. Let's say that I have a question that I wanted to send it to you as a chair, and then I want the rest of my fellow commissioner to know about it. So you're saying that don't reply all, send it to you, and then you forward it. Is that what you're saying?
If you want everybody to know, then you should just send it to everybody. And then all the rest of us?
But you said that don't.
Should not reply all.
You said don't.
Yeah, you, you can.
So the initial question?
But here's the, here's the thing that I've seen many commissioners struggle with over the years is recognizing that they should not reply, because it's such a habit in our everyday life to hit reply or hit reply all. And that's what starts the process of creating a, a conversation. And that's city business that needs to be kept, kept track of. If you're just distributing some information and nobody replies, that's good. But the danger is that whenever you do that, somebody inevitably will forget and hit reply all, and that starts the ball rolling. And so if you just get in the habit of never reply all, or really reply, you know, other than if it's a one-on-one, you know, that, that's just one of those, it's hard for people to not screw that up. And so if you just always remember, one of the rules is not hit reply all no matter what, you're keeping yourself out of a lot of trouble.
It, it might be better in, in that case to send it to staff, to Lena, and then we can include it in like a, a packet or an overall email to the planning commission. And just to kind of keep that, that flow going that way.
And what happens, if, if I was not the one initiated that email, I'm just responding to that email from a fellow commissioner? So my response would have to go to Lena again? I, I was not the one that initiated that email. How does it work?
I was, you said that providing information. I, I figured it was like an article, a magazine article or something.
No, sometimes it's a question.
Yeah.
I think that you can also communicate directly with one planning commissioner. So if, if you get sent an article to the whole group, then you might respond directly to just the one person and say, oh, this is really interesting, I hope we can talk about this in the future or something. But you're not including the whole group in it. Yeah.
The other one that I have actually had happen once or twice is you run into somebody in the grocery store and then somebody else walks up, and all of a sudden, you've got three planning commissioners, and somebody brings up something, and, I mean, you know, you're in a public place, so you're kind of right on the verge of violating the OPMA just because you're visiting about the meeting you're going to have tomorrow night. And it's just one of those remember, right? It's, it's okay to have a social conversation about what you're doing this weekend, but we run into people, I, I've run into, I mean, I stood there one time with me and three city council members and had a conversation. I thought, this might not be a good idea. That's just, right?
So try to avoid that?
Try, well, that's probably a good idea anyway, but try to avoid.
So I'm, I'm, I'm in the grocery store and with the mayor and say, mayor, I can't talk to you.
But the thing is, actually, yes, you just can't, if, if you and I and Asham run into each other in the grocery store, that's fine, we just can't start up a conversation about planning commission business.
Oh, I see.
Right? Just, that's the kind of thing you got to remember. It's, the nuance of some of this can get, really drive you crazy, but it's got to be some common sense about, don't have business conversations with, you know, three or four fellow commissioners, that, just don't do that, just don't let yourself do that. Don't hit reply all, and don't generate content.
I have to say this, Chair, but you can definitely go check John's car as.
Well, I mean, you know.
He did that.
I know, that's why I said that.
But he wasn't in majority.
But see, that's the trick of it, is that people will do something fun, and then somebody says, hey, by the way, somebody talk to me about this thing that's on our agenda, and how easily do we fall into the social trap of talking about it, but that's commission business, you got to be careful. That's why I say, there's a lot to this, but to me, if it boils down to following a few basic common sense rules, then you're like 99% fine.
Totally.
Thanks, Krista.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Krista.
Enjoy your potluck now.
Good.
Good job, Krista, thank you. Good job, Krista, thank you.
When the city clerk says good luck to you, I'm not sure. Makes me a little nervous. Okay, what's next?
Do we want to take a few minutes, or we've blown past our schedule?
I would like to say let's keep going and invite anyone who wants to get up and go grab something to just do it, because we can hear fine.
Please do, I'm in. Interrupt me as you need as I talk. I just have 10 slides. It's just an overview, you know, to discuss kind of bylaws, a few other items. Should be real easy. And so we welcome Neil as a youth board member to the planning commission.
Thank you so much.
And if you have questions, feel free to interrupt. And then if you have questions afterward, you know, you can email me or Miriam is here as well. So. Have we, have you received the orientation guide in the past? I think you had one in 2023. So we update this periodically, from what I understand?
It's been.
Couple of years?
Inconsistent, let's put it that way. It's been inconsistent.
I think we're going to try to do this every year because it includes the work plan and kind of other things coming up. Miriam is wrapping it up this year, and she will send that to you in the next couple of days. I'm going to give you a little peek of what's inside, and I added a few other things. Oh, I need to. Do that. There was a lag between my laptop and, okay. There we go. I do want to bring to your attention the duties and responsibilities of the planning commission. This was recently updated. And really, it just speaks to, I think, I think the reason why it was updated is because there are a lot of things that the planning commission just doesn't do, like, you know, developing annual reports and, you know, things like that. And this is just more realistic as far as what's been updated. So you'll see this on pages four and six of the orientation guide. The bylaws, which were also updated this spring, those, yes. You can find this also in the city code, which is being updated as well. And then the bylaws, I wanted to show you kind of all the the chapters. The bylaws were updated. There are, there's a version that's posted on the planning commission's page on on the city's website. But that's from the previous version. So where you, we adopted the new bylaws. Those need to be posted through the website. So that's happening right now. What I really want to bring to your attention are ex parte contacts, sharing of information. Read that section. And generally, it just talks about the same thing we were just talking about, which is, you know, having conversations outside kind of the public meetings. But that's also if like a developer calls you or, you know, those types of things. It's okay, you know, particularly if it's uninvited and, you know, they're just calling you to lobby you for your vote. But you should report that out at the at the next meeting. Now, I've worked with planning commissions who are very concerned about that. They would report out that I read this newsletter, you know, this newspaper article, you know, about this project. Or I visited the project site to go, you know, look at it, and they report that out. I don't think all of that is necessary, but I didn't think that was a bad practice. I thought that was good. The idea is that everyone on the commission has the same information in order to make a decision. So please read that part of the the bylaws. I think all of these are important parts. But that's one that is kind of confounding to people as far as kind of the ex parte discussions. Then the conflict of interest section, you might be interested in seeing that as well. That is essentially if you, you know, and this is in the ethics code code as well. Essentially, maybe I should bring that up. I'm losing my audience, they came back. Yeah. Conflict of interests, and this could be in in many different ways. You might have friends, family, you might have a financial interest in something, you know, that, you know, you just try to avoid direct conflicts of interest, but also the appearance of of conflicts of interest. So this only goes so far. And then we also have, you should be aware of, the code of ethics in that.
Matt, before we move on, perhaps the most frequent thought comes to mind for us as commissioners and homeowners is if we're obtaining a permit.
Yeah.
During discussions on the building code or the one that's coming up for me is sewer and septic. My my thought is I consult with staff and the attorney necessary to decide if I should recuse myself.
That's true. And that's not automatically, you know, a place where you would need to recuse yourself. I think it's, you know, the best practice is to report it. That, you know, just that at the beginning of the meeting, you just let people know that, you know, that you've applied for a building permit, and it may be germane to the topic you're discussing tonight. But if you're uncomfortable with that, then you should recuse. So that's always the best advice. It may not always be the case, though. But if you go to the code of ethics, and then this is also in the city code, chapter 2.85, there's also quite a bit about like accepting gifts or if you have a financial, you know, conflict, those types of things, you know, need to be known as well. This section, it's interesting, this, and this is the first time I've seen this in kind of my career. But it talks a lot about, there's exemptions here about unsolicited gifts. So I can tell you, I don't know if it happens here, but other places I work, you know, around the holiday season every year, we would start getting boxes of cookies from contractors and developers. And we just set those out, and the public can have them or they're shared among the office or something like that. I've had, you know, developers try to give me a bottle of wine or a gift, you know, or something which I don't take, baseball tickets, you know, things like that. I would never, it's not worth it. None of that interests me. But, oh, and I'm not showing you this on my screen, I'm sorry. I knew better. I really do. Yeah, okay, I'm, nope. Okay, I'll go back to to what I was saying. Anyway, be aware of the bylaws, be aware that, you know, they exist, and there's kind of restrictions on essentially how the planning commission operates. Yeah, I do, I know, I didn't even think about that. Long term calendar, so the rest of this year is going to be town center. We do have impact fee update, which is going to be coming up in August, September. We also have EV charging update, which will be coming up in the fall. But the main work of the planning commission for the rest of the year will be the town center. The SEIS and the plan are going to be published on Monday. And then the draft code update will be published, I believe, on June 23rd. So be aware of that. This will be posted online. We will send you a link to, you know, the the plan and the SAS posted online. Then there'll be a jot form too, that, you know, people can, are welcome to kind of respond and comment. And you're welcome to do that as well. So be aware of that. After, I want to say July, is it 18th? June 18th, is that right? The next planning commission meeting? It is, yeah.
Yeah, so I wanted to ask about that. Everything says June 18th, that's a Wednesday?
Yeah.
Are we having a meeting on Wednesday?
Juneteenth.
Oh, that's why.
Yeah.
Okay, so we just need to be really over communicating that because.
So the next meeting is on Wednesday?
It's a Wednesday, yeah.
Next meeting?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't put together the date.
Framework, our consultant will be here to provide basically an overview of the plan and the SEIS and the code. You're getting an introduction to the code that night as well. So it'll be, yeah, it'll be a fun meeting.
Is that same as was presented to the council on Tuesday night?
It is, except you have the addition of the code.
Okay.
So be aware of that. And then the meeting after that, it'll be mid-July. That'll be after the the closing of the comment period for the SEIS, which is 30 days. That runs from June 9th to July 9th. Then we go to city council for them to choose an alternative, whether it's 2,000 units or 4,000 units or something in between. But then afterwards, we will come back to the planning commission. And we'll go through the plan, the code, you know, all of that again. So have another discussion. The public hearing isn't until September, early September? Yeah, so we have some time as far as kind of updating things and, you know, listening to the public and, you know, receiving comment and making changes, you know, as necessary. But it's going to be a lot of work over the next few months, so be aware. We do have a a meeting on August 7th. And I know that you typically take August off, so we have that one meeting. I think the next meeting won't be until after the first week in September. So you do, you will get a month off, but it's just a little skewed.
Matt, reference made at the city council Tuesday night that there is going to be some presentation to the public at farmer's market this coming Wednesday.
That's right.
What is that, is that?
Yeah, that's an open house.
That's open as for SEIS?
It'll be, yeah, it'll be next Wednesday, June 11th. The farmer's market will be in the commons and then here, and we'll open up the doors. We're going to have an open house. Essentially, we're going to have stations for different topics, housing and transportation and all of that. Staff and consultants will be stationed at each of those stations. And we invite people to ask questions, you know, and really, it's it's to introduce them to the topics and have a discussion.
Is Jeff going to be at one of the stations?
Jeff's going to be at one of the stations.
I might come for that. I have some questions for Jeff.
Do you? Some good stuff.
Just a quick question, like, I'm not quite aware of like the SEIS or these codes that you're talking about. So would I be expected to come? Or should I like be there just as, just to learn more about these codes that you're discussing currently?
I'm more than happy to go over with you, kind of give you, you know, the information that you need. So you're jumping into this kind of late.
Yeah, yeah.
So we've done a lot of work to this point, but I'm more than happy to bring you up to speed.
Matt, you may want to kind of mention what SEIS stands for, so at least he.
It's a supplemental environmental impact statement, yeah.
Okay, okay, that means you can allude to some things, but yeah, all right.
It does, yeah, it has a meaning. We're working towards an FEIS, which is a final environmental impact statement. And essentially, what it does is when you have a project of this nature, you, we're required to review, you know, the impacts to the environment or the impacts to, you know, the transportation system or, you know, public services and all of that. This one is supplemental, which means that we we have an EIS in place, which we do. We're just kind of building on top of that in order to kind of bring it up, kind of modernize it. But then we're also, we're looking at the density in particular for the town center right now.
Is it more or less than an update?
It is an update, yeah.
So is it an update of the original?
It is an update of the original. But, you know, the biggest issue or concern, I think, is the fact that we're looking at changing the maximum number of units from 2,000 to 4,000 within the town center.
Can I suggest that we not get into the details of that in this meeting? Because that's not what the meeting's about.
Tonight? Yeah, that's the last thing I'm going to say about that, yeah.
Well, plenty of opportunity to talk about that in the future. And I want to be careful not to chase down a path that's not for this meeting. Can I go back and ask a question?
Of course.
This is a little bit of a tangent to your communication comment. So one of the things that does happen a lot as a commissioner is we get random emails from people asking about a piece of property or a development or something like that. And I guess maybe it would be helpful to provide guidance for people of, what should they do with that? Should they forward it to somebody, and then who should that be? Or can they ignore it because it's not appropriate for a planning commissioner? Or what, what's the appropriate action? And in particular, when we get those emails that are addressed to the planning commission, so we all get it.
Right.
And I'm envisioning that if all of us forward it to you, you're going to eventually be going, stop emailing me. And is there just some protocol for that kind of stuff?
So the dear planning commission emails, I think you can forward to Lena. And then she'll have it on the record and that sort of thing. So it just needs to be on the record, right? But you're getting a chance to review it and read it, you know, yourself at home or wherever, but.
Many of them, though, are things that do need a response, but it's, the response is appropriately for somebody on the staff, not for any of us. And so I just want to make sure.
And then those individual requests, and I've seen a few of them, someone asking about zoning or a building permit or whatever, you can forward to me. So I've been, somehow I've been assigned the liaison to the planning commission. And so I, that's my job.
You drew the short straw, I know how that works.
Can I, can I interrupt just for one second? If they're asking about zoning or properties that they're looking at, you can also recommend that they reach out to frontdesk@samamish.us, and that will go to Lena, and she can take it from there and direct them accordingly.
Okay.
You don't have to send them all to me.
So kind of following up on Mark's question, if it says, dear, dear planning commission, can we generally assume that the city, either yourself or somebody in the city, they have already received the copy of it, therefore, we don't have to do anything? If it is dear commission without mentioning specific name?
If if one of us are on the email chain, then we've received it, but there's no guarantee.
But my question, how do I know? That's that's basically what Mark asked. How do we know? It says, dear, dear planning commission, how do you know that it's been addressed to me or does it address to everyone?
Is it a letter or an email?
Emails. And I don't know when, when, I think there's a planning commission general alias. And I'm not sure that I know who all is included in that. So is it only the seven of us, or does it include you?
Yeah, it includes Lena and I, yeah.
Okay, so to me, if you receive something that looks like it's just the planning commission, then you really, you guys already have it.
Yeah.
And we don't need to take any action.
They might go to our webpage and just take your individual emails and copy and paste. In that circumstance, if we're not on that chain, then we haven't seen it. And I've had that happen in the past, that, you know, staff was left out entirely, and everyone just assumed that we received it, so.
It's a pretty common thing that happens. And so, you know, I guess my one suggestion is, in general, never just, just never reply to any of those.
Yeah.
Just forward them to the staff so they can take care of whatever the appropriate action is. Because otherwise, if you reply, then you can get drawn into a conversation that you don't need to be in part of, so just forward it.
The final item is the annual docket, and you'll start working on that in August, September as well. Essentially, you're looking at what you're, what work you're going to complete in 2026. We do know that we're going to look at the neighborhood center planning and then look at the tree regulations as well. So that'll be next year. Our focus this year is town center.
So Matt, are you saying that, can we go back to the previous slide? Are we saying that the first three items is going to be for the remaining of this year?
Yes.
And from a neighborhood center planning all the way down will be 2026?
That's right.
So the three topics between now and then are the first three?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And we'll talk a little bit about the community development department. So, you know, we report to the planning commission. You know, we do long range comprehensive planning. Those are the items that we typically report to out to the the planning commission. We also do permitting, we do, you know, entitlements, we do building permits and inspections. Just, there's a whole host of kinds of items that that we address. This is also in your orientation guide. Are the divisions within the the community development department?
Can you go back to that, I have a question on that previous slide?
Sure, okay.
Can you tell us about the annexation and annexation policy? Do we still? Can you tell us about the annexation and annexation policy? Do we still have some annexation area that we're dealing with?
No, but it's, it's something that we would address if we ever received a request or if we took an action.
Okay, thank you.
The divisions include long-range planning, current planning, and, and the permit center. Those are land use permits, and those are the entitlements in zoning review. We have building services, which are the permits and inspections. We have co-compliance, that's property maintenance enforcement, essentially. We have administration, manage and coordinating the department. It's also operating the front desk. And so, you know, anyone that comes to City Hall, they go to the front desk. That's part of community development services, but it covers the entire city. It's the hardest job in the building. You have to know everything that's going on. And then we have our Town Center team, and that's part of long-range and current planning, but, you know, we're, the people on that team know about both. They kind of know both ends of, of what's happening. Usually it's long-range, then you get into current planning, but our group is, you know, kind of intertwined, and we stay up to speed on everything that's going on in the Town Center. Our key staff, David Pyle is our director. You're familiar with him. I'm the deputy director. Miriam is the planning manager. Evan Fisher, who I think you're, you're all familiar with Evan. He was your liaison before. He is currently on paternity leave. Is it okay to say that? Yes, I think so.
He's told all of us, so.
Okay, yeah. And then Lena, who, who you know. She's the Planning Commission coordinator. I'm the liaison. Sam Dunlap, I don't think you know him, but he's assigned to our Town Center team. And then Darcy Donovan, she is the Town Center coordinator. She's assigned to the Town Center. Darcy's kind of the glue of the entire operation when it comes to Town Center. She keeps everything moving forward. And then Jackie, who's a management analyst, she works with, with Miriam, and she's currently on leave as well. So, yeah, we're a little bit shorthanded right now.
Can I ask a question? Can you go back to the previous slides?
Sure.
Would it be possible to put a name next to each for, at least for us to know? It would be nice.
How do you mean?
Like who is administration, who is co-compliance section manager, or?
Okay.
Would be, at least, could know. So if any question that we know that we should be kind of sending an email or something?
Let me, I'm gonna go to our website in a second, so.
Okay, thank you.
You'll see that there. And then this is also in your orientation guide, and I want to be sure that you're aware that there's a lot of plans. They're not all land use plans, they're not all development plans, but there's a lot of plans that, you know, the city has adopted and that we, we work through. Of course, we have the development code, the comprehensive plan, Town Center plan. So those are, exist and within the Planning Commission's domain, but we also have public works standards, stormwater standards. We have a climate, climate action plan, a parks plan, you know, all of these different things that are, kind of work alongside, you know, everything that we do. So we're, we don't operate in a, in a vacuum or a silo. There's a lot of other things we need to take into consideration. We have a bike ped plan that's coming up. We're trying to figure out how we link, you know, particularly with this Town Center task, how we link the Town Center to all of these kind of different plans. For the climate action plan, we're talking about taking another step as far as, you know, incentivizing or encouraging green buildings within the Town Center. Exactly how do we do that? That'll be an upcoming task that we've kind of separated out from this Town Center plan. The bike ped plan, which is currently under development, same time as a Town Center plan, so how do you merge those two? We're working together to kind of get that done, essentially. This is all on page 12 of your orientation guide. In the PDF copy that you'll receive, there's links to all of these plans that you'll be able to follow, and then take a look. Neil, do you have any questions so far?
Not particularly right now, yeah.
This orientation guide's gonna help you out quite a bit.
Sure, I'll certainly look through it more in detail.
And then this, too. The short courses on local planning are excellent. So there's links to these within, within your orientation guide. I want to say it's MRSC that, that puts these on? Yeah, it is. Do I have that right? MRSC, yeah. Yeah. And so when I first started, my first month, I watched every one of these, and it was, like, very, very helpful. I really enjoyed, well, the short course, but comprehensive planning basics, you know, just kind of understanding the lay of the land in, in the state of Washington. I just moved here. I didn't know, I kind of knew, okay, we have the Growth Management Act, we have, you know, comprehensive planning, we have other kinds of enabling documents within the statutes, but that provided a pretty good foundation. In the orientation guide, yeah. So they're videos. They're maybe 10 minutes apiece. They're very informational. So if you have a little bit of time and you're interested, you know, I would encourage you to watch these videos. That is my last slide. Let me show you before I confuse myself again. Okay. Here we go. So this is the, the Planning Commission's webpage. So really, it's just your emails are on here. This is your city email. And then there's, there's links to the agendas and that sort of thing. We will post the new bylaws here when they're done. This is currently the, the previous version. We updated, I was saying, we updated those this past spring. We still need to. I think they're, they're, I don't know what program that's called, but what is the, in the, in the code, who's publishing those, the bylaws?
Actually, they're general code now. They merged.
General code, okay. So it's a company that we work with that's gonna publish them. So be aware of that page. Then this is the, the Community Development page, and then you can find, like, here's current planning. So this is a Vrels group, but you can basically make an appointment with each, any of the planners. I don't see a direct link to Avrel on here, but... Yeah, they're not all on here. So, Sayed, I will, I will update the PowerPoint to include the division managers.
Thank you.
Yeah. If you go to long-range planning, Miriam, are you on there?
I don't think so.
Why am I the only one on the website who's directly linked?
Is that intentional?
Yeah. I see, it is a computer.
That's just a demonstration of the skill of our staff.
So you go to the Planning Commission, there's Matt Brandmeier, and then you go to Town Center. I... I'm sorry, but...
I think if you go to long-range planning, it's under that map.
I'm trying to get back to where I was, but the way... There we go. It's hidden. There's a ribbon at the top of my screen that I can't get past. This is the, the Town Center plan page. You see, again, Matt Brandmeier. But we're posting everything for the Town Center to this page, so please be aware of it. And there's a lot of information that's posted. This, this talks about, Neil, this might be helpful for you, about the SEIS. There's a frequently asked questions, upcoming meetings. This is where we're gonna post the, the plan update and the SEIS background information, which is really helpful. If you go to the Town Center Development, and then this has information on all the developments or, that have been built or items that we're currently reviewing. So if you scroll down, you match up the numbers on the map to, to this, and you open it up, and what you'll find is all the information that we have about each of these developments. There's a little project description. You keep scrolling down. There's links to everything. There's staff reports, and there's application items, there's plans posted. Everything that you can think of that we've received during the process is in there. And that's for every single project, so be aware of that. It's such a great tool to have. Are you familiar with our GIS? If you're interested, there's a link to the GIS, which is, you know, geographic information systems map. That is also posted online, and through there you can find the zoning. That's a layer that you can click on. There's other information, environmental, there's erosion hazards, there's landslide hazards, there's seismic hazards. There's all kinds of information on here that you might be interested in. And then other departments, I, you know, this is the capital improvements, which is under the Public Works umbrella. And here you can find, like, the transportation plant, the improvement plan. You can find the stormwater. Yeah, here it is, right here. A link to that document, the stormwater capital improvement plan. All of that stuff is there. I already brought up the ethics. I think that's all I wanted to show you. That concludes my presentation.
Hey, can I ask, and I'm gonna have to admit my own deficiency here.
Yeah.
But can you, and then maybe I'm the only one, so you guys tell me, but I know you can get back to previous meetings, going back a ways. It's a file folder structure. You can see presentations, slide decks and presentations. How do we get to that? Does everybody else know how to get to that?
Well, Suda does. I always struggle to remember how to get to that, so maybe you could just, let's just say you can remind me.
Yeah. Is this a test? Is this for me? Yeah.
I don't remember. The civic website, but I don't remember exactly how to get there.
Yeah.
Click on a date, you click on a date and you look at the, on the City Council or Planning Commission and...
Yeah. I'm trying to control my cursor. There you go. So, yeah, everything is, all of the agendas. I shouldn't look at that screen. I need to look at, so here's the Planning Commission. And you see, everything is posted from 2003 on. There's a lot of information. That's all the agendas, and then the minutes are also posted on there as well. Presentations are posted, yeah.
And the handouts, too? Yes?
Everything that Paul's ever given us.
I was gonna say that.
And Mary, yeah.
So this handout is gonna show up some, the one that Paul gave us.
It sure will, yep. Right, yeah. It's, it's a duplicate, yeah. Yeah, so I have a direct link to this page on my browser. But you can get here from the, the homepage. Just go to the document center. That's really all you need to find.
Yeah, and I know in the past, a lot of times folks want to refer back to one of the presentations, and it's good to remember how to get back to it. Okay, any other comments?
No, I think that's all I have. As I mentioned, Miriam's gonna send out the orientation guide. Please, you know, read it at your convenience, and if you have any questions, you can ask Miriam or I.
Matt, I have a suggestion.
Yep.
So, and this goes way back to the beginning of your presentation, thinking about a brand-new commissioner, not too familiar with city or local government, maybe a simple page with a map of the city, what the city's services are that are provided by the city organization.
Yeah.
And what other services are provided by other organizations. And that's particularly important for the Planning Commission, because we've got the utility districts, ESFR.
Oh, that's a great point, John, yeah.
Buja Power.
Yeah.
Even the sheriff, you know. We've got this jumble of jurisdictions, so that it would just kind of ground them, that we're not, we're not a full-service city.
Right, yeah. Well, it's something I hadn't really thought of, but there's, I, I know there's additional kinds of informational presentations that we want to give this year, so maybe that's one of them. We also have some, you know, I, I think we just did a permit process overview, overview, right? So we, we don't need to do that, but that's something for the future, but we will do that next year's orientation. So we're, we're gonna try to make this a regular thing. And the idea isn't that this is only for the new people. It's for, it's like a refresher for everyone, so I hope you found this interesting and helpful. So, thank you.
Matt, did you say that the bylaws are being updated?
They were updated over the spring, yeah, the spring.
So the version that's posted is just not the updated? That's what you were pointing out?
Yes, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay.
That's fine. Matt, just, just a question. On a long-term schedule for the remaining of the year, usually we have in the fall, we have joint meeting with the City Council. You didn't mention that.
I'm not aware of that. Yeah.
Miriam, it usually is in October, right?
Yeah.
Joint meeting between the City Council and the Planning Commission?
Yeah, historically, we have done a joint meeting, although there's been some years where it hasn't happened. We'll have to look at the schedule and...
But it's gonna happen, it's gonna be...
We have to talk with the city manager's office and see, kind of looking at your schedule and their schedule, if there's opportunities to combine, and it makes sense. The fall is gonna be particularly busy with the Town Center stuff coming through and, and other things, so TBD.
Thank you.
Anything else from Miriam, Matt, Lena, anybody from this evening? Nope, okay. I'll encourage everybody to look at the calendar that's on there and pay attention to June 18th. I'm gonna have to put a big, loud reminder on my computer, because I will be thinking it's Thursday. So I think we're done. Would someone like to move to adjourn?
So move?
Second.
It's been moved second they adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no. Thank you, everyone. Don't hesitate to take any more food with you, and have a good evening.